All right, good morning. I will call to order the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, August 2nd, 2016. I can't believe it's August. And ask if everybody please join the board as we honor America and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberal of any and justice for all. All right, we will start as we always do with public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address topics on today's agenda. We've got one who has requested to speak and is actually very timely because it'll be the first item on our agenda, our friend Arden Greiner, who we get to see anytime we talk about TIF. Arden, how are you today?
Hi, fine. Arden Greiner from Sherwin Township. Morning, Arden. Not real organized this morning, just some brief comments about TIF, you know, the communities that are flying today, you know, why does the whole county have to pay what these communities want? It's awful hard to, it's fairly undistributed around the counties. Cambridge is an interesting thing. We're gonna do a $1.9 million project and $1.6 million will be borrowed against future TIF revenue, not from the county.
That's city revenue.
That's city.
Said that once, didn't say that.
Right. I think we need requesting 60,000, 50,000 from the county out of the $1.9 million project.
It's kinda like we're tiffing the TIF, but it's look like we're doubling down on the TIF or we're betting on that.
Yeah, that's not even close to right. I mean, we're not doubling up anything, but go ahead.
Yeah. I don't know, a lot of it, it's kinda like loaning money. I don't know if we're qualified to, you know, be loaning money. I talked to a guy this week who's got all the permits for a half million dollar project in the bank after a month before this fund was funded, so I don't think it's in your purview to be determining who should and shouldn't be giving the money. I think one of Collins' wasn't signed on quotes. The Story City Park, the estimates, you know, were $10,000 for mobilization, 10,000, 20,000, 40,000, 18,000, 5,000, I mean, real general figures. 5,400 for picnic tables, that's I think one thing that might add a solid quota on. Earthwork, 20,000, 35,000 for retaining malls, 10,000, 20,000, 20,700. Real general terms and I think I'd like to have more accurate estimates of what's going on than just be loaning money basically or giving money to people on just buy and sky projects. The total amount this year which you wanna give out is 268,000. I think your contract with Iowa Economic Development is 85,000, or if you threw in the workforce development for another 25,000, so $110,000. I mean, the efficiency of government, you're spending 85 to 110,000 just to give away 200 and 368,000.
Yeah, that's, again, Arden, I appreciate you coming up, but just be accurate. So it's not even close to accurate that we're spending 110 just to give away 300,000. I mean, that's not even in the ballpark of being accurate.
What's the contract?
Yeah, no, no, there's a contract for economic development services and workforce development, but if you think their only role is to dig into these urban renewal plans, you're missing the boat. And all I'm telling you is, I've appreciated you all the way through, Arden. You've been a consistent voice, you know exactly what you think, I think you make a lot of good points, but what I expect out of you, and we've done this a couple times, is just be accurate in what you say and that's not even close to accurate. It's not accurate to say we're doubling up anywhere.
Did you have a contract with Iowa Economic Development before we had the TIF program?
Oh, Leanne, you'll have to help me with that. I think it occurred before we put the TIF program in place. It had really nothing to do with the TIF program other than this is one of the things that we put in their purview to look at.
Okay, I stand corrected. It's sticking with it.
Yep, it is.
Going down the program.
Thanks, Arden.
All right, so that leads us right in, Arden, great job teeing it up. We've got presentations from the 2016 Urban Renewal Area Program applicants. We're gonna start with Leanne Harder, who is going to kinda talk us through the process, what we're doing here today, what we can expect to get out of today, and then we're gonna hear a presentation from each of the, each of the towns except for Slater, who's put in an application. Morning, Leanne.
Morning. What I'm gonna do is just share a few slides with the board and the audience, go over the projects that we received and then both schedule. I have a couple visuals that show you where the proposed projects are. And this year is a little bit different than the past couple years in that new properties, wind turbines are possibly proposed to be added to the urban renewal area. We did receive four applications that met the timeframe. Those are listed up there. I know they're very difficult to see. There were papers up here as well. A lot quickly, just saying, these are from the state of Collins, Story City, Cambridge, and Huxley. Total request about $320,000 of funding requested. And actually, when I call you all, I'll go in the order that I have listed on the sheet too. In addition, Senator Slater did submit an application that was past the timeframe, so they will not be presenting today. They will be presenting on August 16th in two weeks. And they did request 45,000, so the total of askings are about 370,000. On the bottom of the sheet is a proposed schedule that we've laid out that gets this before the board and the public for review prior to the beginning of October. Just for the public's benefit, I shared this with the board a couple weeks ago. It is a more accelerated timeframe than the past couple years because of the general election and making sure that the Alders office, their role is very significant in this process, that they're able to free up the rest of October for the general election. The next slide, this is a snapshot of the current urban renewal area plan. You see all the numbers, I guess it's kinda difficult, but each of the projects that has been funded thus far corresponds with a number on this map. The shaded areas are the various school districts. And then this is one of the handouts along with the flip side, which is that I expect no one in the audience will be able to read that, but that is a, the numbers correlate to the numbers on the map. And this is what those things, the taxing entities for today's consultation meeting later on in the meeting. And then lastly, there are seven new wind turbines under construction in Story County. My understanding and time in planning and development and their discussions with the builder, these will be constructed prior to October this year, so they will be up and running by January 1st. There are five turbines in the Nevada School District. Four of those are actually located in Grant Township and one is in Nevada Township. And then the additional two turbines are located in Palestine Township, which is kind of the same, Palestine School District, it's actually Ballard School District. So with that, if there are no questions, I will ask each of the attendees to come up, give a brief presentation to the board, and then conclude today with consultation meeting later on.
Just a couple things. One, this program has touched every community in Story County except for Colo, Gilbert, and Sheldon. Is that right?
Yes.
Colo's the only one of those that has made application, right? We denied an application from Colo. Gilbert's never made an application and Sheldon has never made an application. We've been able to impact everybody else, one school system so far, two projects with Colo, Nesco, and no other school system. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Leanne before she gets away? All right, so first on our list is Huxley to present. Start by introducing yourself, please.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Good morning, my name is Travis Bachen. I'm the Parks and Rec Director for the city of Huxley. First off this morning, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys for the funding we received the last cycle. With that funding, we were able to purchase and install a new playground structure at Centennial Park in Huxley. That was installed in May and it's been getting a lot of usage, so once again, I just wanted to say thank you for that. Today I'm here proposing another new playground structure to be purchased and installed at North Calson Park. Every playground structure being installed is, meets the ADA requirements. There are different levels, more you can do to make every playground more accessible. We would like to install what we are labeling an all-inclusive playground structure at North Calson Park, and this would include ramps for persons with disabilities who are in wheelchairs, and it would also include a port rubber surface. We are hoping to install this, or purchase and install this next summer. The total cost of the project is 106,000. The city does have the 25% match to go with this. It is a little bit more expensive of a playground. We are not able to do a community build on this one due to the port rubber surfacing, so that's why the cost has increased in this application.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Travis?
We've already done something like this at the school, so already seen it through on these projects.
Wayne, any questions?
No, I just, again, laying out, you know, if you ever looked at that, quite impressive. I guess I haven't been able to see the other one from the last time, but I also know that amenities like these things do have a value to particularly families with young children and so forth, and another way to get them outdoors and one of the cornerstones of Story County Conservation and so forth. And we're always talking about healthy lifestyles and having opportunities to get people outdoors more often, whether we're talking biking, walking, or playground usage and things like that. So I just appreciate the vision of your community in reaching out to this segment as well.
Yep, and the one at Centennial State isn't that. I mean, there's always people there. Travis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Collins. Oh, no, next is Cambridge, Mayor DeYoung. Mayor, welcome to our representative republic.
I got this new shirt.
I like your shirt, yeah. For those of you that haven't read the paper yet today, there's some fun comments in there from Mayor DeYoung.
Oh, I am thinking about expensing this shirt. It's a... I'm really funny wife. There's a picture of our project that we're... Scott D., I'm the mayor. There's some, those are our concept drawings. We've actually begun working with the architect in design on the project. Today they are doing soul organs. Our agenda, or timeline for completion of this project is we'll take bids in January. Architectives advise that's a prime term for taking this. Construction will start in spring and be completed about eight months later. They're looking at a tentative December 1st, 2017, I can't see. This building, it'll do multiple things for our community. One, it provides a place for community ads. The others provide the new library space. The library we have now is quite small.
It's your mic, Mike. This is really mine, I'm sorry.
Really mine, it's not mine.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Be just quiet.
I'm just a little, I'm sorry. I'll get a little closer, that's... The library we have now is small and behind the times on technology, so this will offer for that to be updated and be more useful for the community. City Hall will also be located in this building. That will free up two buildings on our main street for renovation and attended businesses. We are in great need of buildings for our main street area. Some of them are tied up with one individual. They're not available for people to move in. As far as dollar amounts on this, we do have a TIF program in Cambridge. And the $1.6 million that we are proposing tomorrow, it will be paid back over a 10-year period with TIF dollars.
What do you have TIF'd in Cambridge?
Most of the city is TIF. There's a few exceptions, but most of the city, our TIF program has allowed us to put some old industrial park in. That is 50% of it, and we have prospects for the other two lots. That was all paid for with TIF dollars. We, I looked the other day, we are the lowest tax rate city in the county, or...
And we're the lowest county in the state of Iowa, by the way, county law.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd like to throw that out there, anytime you tee it up.
But three years in a row, we've been the lowest city tax rate in the county. We've been able to do a considerable amount of economic development thanks to programs like this that assist with projects and the other grants that the county provides with TIF money. The 1.6, our estimated cost is about 1.9. We don't have hard figures yet, obviously. We won't until bids come in, so, but that's a good ball of hard figure. The architect told us the other day that typically their costs are coming right in on where their estimates are, so... We're going, we are doing a public fundraising campaign and applying for other grants to make up the difference. We have $150,000 budgeted in this year's budget.
From the city, and you're only requesting 50 from us.
Correct.
What's your goal for your capital campaign?
We'd like to raise 100,000 of private donations.
Have you started it?
Yes, we're about 20% down. We've got 20,000 in our fund with the Story County Community Foundation.
Being it's TIF, that's the modest amount you're asking, you are doing your own capital campaign, you are putting city money against this, what's the conversation with that large amount, right, it's like, TIF has a, I have an interest in how TIF is both derived and spent, what's the conversations you have with your council and your community when saying that we're willing to cap the additional tax revenue from properties to move, to do these things?
I think that one of the concerns with this project was gonna be a tax increase, but with the use of TIF dollars, that will eliminate that. There's enough TIF dollars each year to make a, more than make the payment for a 10-year payoff on this building. I don't think, there's a few individuals that are concerned about it, but they're not, they're not concerned enough to come to the council or to review any of it.
So, well, it just, you know, every community has its own character and approach to things, and this is an aggressive use of this taxing tool, and I just wonder what your community said about it.
It seems to be an overwhelming support for the building, right? And there is a need in the community, and I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
No, you do, but once again, you come to us as you're the Cambridge mayor and it's just like, okay, you're from there, you represent there, and it's just like, okay, the conversations you have amongst yourselves, I wanted you to share it.
Well, it's an exciting project for us. It's really gonna revitalize the downtown area, bring a lot of people into town that normally wouldn't come.
This is gonna be on Water Street?
Yes, sir.
Where at?
Right on the corner of Water and Third, there's a open lot there.
Right.
The buildings had been torn down several years ago. They were dilapidated buildings and the city purchased those with some money that they received from the sale of the old school building.
Right.
And they demolished the buildings and that lot has been sitting there for about 15 years now.
Marty, I really appreciate that question, and what drove home your question to me was several months ago, I had the chance to go to Manhattan, Kansas, with a group of about 30 folks from the city of Ames Economic Development and the county to look at what they were doing, and we met with the city leaders, economic development groups and so forth. And, you know, when they planned the redevelopment of Manhattan and the city with public private involvement, a lot of the questions came about was the challenges that they faced going through that process, knowing that not everybody was 100% on board initially, and over time you had to work with a lot of business owners and use different tax incentives to get them on board. And the big thing is, as we all know, change is difficult for many people to swallow. There are some people that live certainly and they like the way their community is, and so when you talk about spending dollars to, you know, beautify it or whatever reason, you know, they're content. So how do you, you know, balance all of that and then think in terms of, okay, if the town is to grow and to survive and you wanna attract businesses and other folks, what other amenities need to be there? And to me, one of the things that I think communities in Story County ought to be thinking about is with the new influx of potential employers coming in to Waukover and the research area, they're gonna wanna live somewhere. And so as communities have different amenities, different people will probably wanna move in different types of communities to address certain lifestyles. So I think it's important that that question at least is talked about because you are gonna have a few folks in any given community that's gonna be a little bit slower and more reluctant to change, and some you never wanna condense. But I think it's important that city leaders, elected or other folks step out on a leaf of faith and decide that if this is ultimately in the best interest of our community for the long-term stability, you've gotta make tough choices. And so I'm happy to hear that while, you know, it seems like an interesting price tag initially swallowed, there is at least a projection out there that this is something that you can accomplish as you move forward. Just wanted to acknowledge that question and say thank you for asking it.
Well, that just speaks to the fact that when you go into the smart communities outside of the Ames and Nevada area, you know, one of the priorities that we're gonna put before us on the 1718 is portable housing. And I don't think, you know, it doesn't take much of a master of home building, you know, but the life of a building at home, possibly in Cambridge, is gonna be a bit cheaper than what it would be in Ames or Nevada. And the thing is that this is one of those things that cause people to look at that community a second time and possibly move there. I think you're, you know, you're taking something on a scale that is impressive for a community your size. And I can't say, I just have some time span in this hearing area with family obligations up there and whatnot, and I know what the Davis family did to that community by putting such a facility there. It is used one bit, and I would say that, you know, you guys were wise to try to encompass as much as you are when you're trying to tie in the library as well to this.
Yeah, and so I think both you guys are dead on. I would only add to it that the goal when we put this program in place, or one of the goals when we put this program in place, was to help our towns, specifically our smallest towns, help themselves. And Wayne, I heard you talk a lot during your first 10 years as a supervisor about what we could do for Main Street, Iowa, specifically our small towns, and the reality, Scott, you've been mayor of Cambridge, how long now?
This is a little over 14 years.
A little over 14 years. I mean, and you were really active with the mayor's, with the mayor's group in the county. We were spending zero dollars on Main Street, almost zero dollars on Main Street in our small town for 10 or 15 years, and things started to show. Cambridge got really active, but hopefully this program has played a role in seeing some real dollars spent on Main Street, not only in Cambridge, but in a lot of our towns, right?
Yeah, because I think if you really look at the way the economic development dollars were spent, and Mark Jackson probably can speak mostly to that and a few others, you know, I think we were talking somewhere in neighborhood about 80,000 to 90,000, and in many cases, it was just small projects like beautification, signage, different types of things that communities were doing. And largely, I think a lot of it had to do with just that the available funding wasn't there for some of the larger scale projects, for one, but I'm really pleased when I look back over our tenure and some of the focus of the change is that we are able to do more to assist some of our smaller communities. And one of the advantages that for me personally has been when you travel to the National Association counties like I've had the chance to do, and I just got back from Long Beach, and you start hearing and talking to your colleagues and you recognize the role that counties are playing in economic development and public-private partnerships. Those are the things that are really transforming many of their communities and so forth. And at the same time, it's also opening up avenues for new businesses to come in because they see that there is more than one entity that's, you know, looking for the overall future sustainability. So I think I'm pleased that the county and our smaller communities are at least looking to the future in terms of how they can continue to reinvest for future growth and development. So that's just, and I think in the state of Iowa, Dubuque is a good model for us to take a look at. There were years that the Board of Supervisors in the county played a very limited role. And I think about 10 years ago, they got very aggressive and very involved, and if you've ever been to downtown Dubuque, you will see a major transformation of that community. So I think, you know, those are kind of examples that we can look at. Doesn't mean that we will duplicate everything, but it's kinda like something that Supervisor Sanders said years ago, we wanna be at the table to be part of the discussion rather than necessarily being the driving force behind, you know, these new initiatives and so forth.
Absolutely. Scott, anything else?
Yes, I just wanted to, over the past 15 years, we've had some economic development, but I can attest that over the last couple years, the activity has increased more than double of people inquiring on Cambridge. I think we're poised for growth and programs like this really make things easier for us to accommodate that growth.
Scott, thank you.
Thank you. Will you have any small-scale drawings or anything like this that could be shared with us at a later time as we go through this process? I mean, obviously, I don't wanna carry that around.
I'll leave these here, I can email.
Okay, good. Yeah, it'll be helpful.
Thanks, Scott. Next, we got Collins.
I'll just do that up there.
Sure.
Brett, how are you today?
Good. I wish Scott would have texted me, told me Brett's not the other way.
You and Scott are yourself are in the same place, don't you?
Well, yeah. I do have PowerPoint and I'll try to be brief with it.
Brett, start by introducing yourself.
My name is Brett Kowmich, I'm the mayor of Collins. And this PowerPoint probably proves that Collins is the most technologically advanced city in the story county. But I'll kinda go through briefly and give you an idea. You guys have got our write-up and what we're looking for, and I did wanna just kinda give an idea. I know Scott, they've done a lot of good things in Cambridge, we've been trying to do a lot of good things in Collins too, and you can just see over the last six years, just in my opinion, and I'm not gonna say this is all because of me, I'm definitely not out digging ditches, but I can tell you, we've done a lot of things and we've been able to demonstrate a firm capacity to demonstrate programs, projects, funding, and you get a lot of good things done. And, you know, some of those things have been on the table for 30 years before I got there. I found plans to upgrade our storm sewer from 1978 to 1982 and neither had been touched. And we were able to tackle that in the last year, and we're pretty proud of a lot of things we've done. And saying that, we've raised about $1.7 million in funding for these various projects over the last six years, and we've really gone a long ways. You know, Scott also mentioned how they've really seen a big increase in economic development, and Collins has had a little progress too in the last six years. You know, we had just a post office, a repair shop, a bar, which we've always had, I guess, insurance company and a barber is all we had in Collins, and you can look over to the right, and I'm not even sure that list is complete, but we have, we've been growing. We have been growing, and a lot of that's because of creating availability on Main And a lot of that's because of creating availability on Main Street for people to be able to come in. I know, I know for a fact there's at least two or three buildings that we've, well, three buildings we've had a very heavy hand in the city has in getting ready for entrepreneurship. And I think that's really important. One of our problems and-
Brett, before you go on, because you, you made me think of this. So one of the, one of the things that I believe the county has done to assist our small towns, and you've played a big role in this, is not just the funding that we can provide, but it's given the opportunity for, for ci- the smaller cities specifically to update their plans and go through some things that they had not gone through in some cases for many, many years. Talk about that for just a minute, how important it's been for our smaller towns to update their plans and the county funding that program to allow them to update their plans.
Well, and I think you might be referring to, you know, comprehensive planning or capital improvement planning. I know that, I know seven years ago, Collins couldn't even spell CIP. It wasn't in our portfolio at all. And of course, we've, we've been pretty aggressive in creating our, our CIP so we can kind of keep people focused and know what's going on. And if you have it in writing and you have funding sources identified, you have a real plan that you want to tackle, it makes a big difference. And when you get naysayers or people on the council coming to, or even once you've been there and starting to have cold feet, having that document and having that fact that they had already committed to it, it helps a lot. It draws people along, keeps them moving. And that's a lot of things in a small town, just keeping things moving. You don't have to make all the right decisions, but you do have to make decisions and you do have to make commitments. And if you don't make those commitments, nothing is done. And like I said, having it in writing, it does make a difference. You know, words are words, but they're even more important when they're acted on. If you have available, you can act on. In saying that, you know, some of these things are, are a direct result of that, that long-range planning. I'm not only convinced of that, but I can prove it. If you will look at any situation small towns are dealing with, a lot of it is the availability of space. And you've got these Main Streets, they're pulling into such decay that even if you can't attract a business, how do you get them in there? The viability of a business depends on how much it's going to cost them to operate. And the profit threshold is so different for a, a small town than it is in a big town. These town, these small businesses don't have the ability to come in and spend $100,000 to renovate a building and then expect to turn profit and keep themselves available. You go to a larger town like in Ames, they can open up a Walmart or a Hy-Vee and then they have more foot traffic. Small towns, we don't have that. So we have to get creative in developing partnerships, not just city partnerships, but corporate partnerships and, and, and private partnerships to make things happen and to renovate these old buildings. Now, talking about old buildings, our project is broken into two phases. This is our first phase. This old building used to be a grocery store. In fact, the last proprietor just passed away here a couple of weeks ago, Jean Barrett, she just passed away about two weeks ago, actually, or she was the roommate of my, my wife's grandma over the nursing home in Nevada. And that building has been vacant for a long, long time. And if you want to talk about vacancies, you can see how that could have a big impact on the viability of that building. In fact, that building is not even sound anymore. Only good thing is it does have air conditioning. If you want to get a little closer look, you can see that. Caved in about five or six years ago due to a big snowstorm and the owner is completely negligent in managing this thing. The alternative is we want to tear that building down and it's right next to our community center slash Legion Center, American Legion. And we wanted to create an amenity that complements that Legion. Now, that center gets a lot of travel. I know Dakens was mentioned earlier, that's been pretty pivotal to Zearing. Well, this thing is the heart and soul of our town and-
We held a meeting there one night, remember the, the men's property? We held a meeting of, of packed house in that building and it, it's a really nice place.
You know, and my, my wife's uncle just passed away, we had a funeral luncheon there. I mean, it's, it serves in so many different capacities. And being that it's such a centerpiece of our town, we want, like I said, we want to create something that complements it. The idea of tearing that property down and building a new building may not be cost-effective, but we can definitely do some neat things with the adjoining property. And, and we've, we've looked at a lot of different options and that's still in play right now. We want to do something that's going to help promote Main Street, draw in more foot traffic, keep people there while they're there and like I said, maybe even try to create a tribute to the American Legion folks that, that serve our country or have served our country. That's phase one and that's probably the, the most important piece, just because I think the building itself is structurally sound and, and it's gone from just a blighted building to being a, a real health hazard in a lot of ways. So we really just want to get it torn down.
One question, you said, you said the owner of the building hasn't, hasn't been real responsive? So is this in private hands, is it owned by the city?
The city is in the process of making the city property.
Okay.
It will be city property before we start anything else.
Which is one of our requirements.
That's right. So we will, we will have that covered.
Now, I did hear you say that the plan basically is to tear this building down.
Absolutely. And if you, you go back even, um, this picture here and you can see clearly that the left-hand side, our, we have a couple of businesses right next door. That building is causing so much stress on that shared wall that it's actually compromising the business that's next door to it. So not only is it keeping other businesses coming in, it's actually damaging the businesses that currently exist. So it's pretty important we, we take steps to get this thing down. And because of the age and because of the issues, there is a little more cost involved in tearing this down because they have to basically cut that wall off. And the way we have to remove it, we have to treat it as all, all asbestos because we can't even get people there to inspect it because structurally it's unsafe, just so you know.
Now, Scott, go back to the other, where you've got several different projects that are listed under the alternatives to the next one. Now, are these things planned for the future? Some of these are already existing?
Actually, yes, they are. We are, we're going to fund this separately and we'll be able to do that through local donations, in-kind donations, things like that. We have a number of people lined up, local lines of other organizations who are willing to get involved and make things happen. And we've got, you know, some farmers who are eager to donate some farm rocks if we want to, I mean, where do we want actually? But we are, we've got a pretty active community in making these things happen. And I, I know we've got a few things going on as far as which one, which direction we're going to center on, but that, that lot will not stay vacant very long. And phase two is actually taking this building and renovating it. You know, Midwest Insurance Consultants has been a long time partner with the city Collins. And they had a similar problem with this building a number of years ago because it was starting to compromise the building that they had and operated out of. The idea is to take this building that's already been re-rubbed, already had a new facade on, and it's got a solid shell to it. It's just a matter of creating something viable on the inside of it. And we're working with, with Midwest Insurance Consultants to do that. They've offered to turn this building over to us, stream a gene. And it will be a city-owned property at that point. And once we're able to get it renovated, make it viable for business, then we'll be able to hopefully spark some more investment in the long-term Main Street as well.
So you, I assume you mentioned the structure and this, that, you kind of had an engineering firm or someone taking a look at the overall foundation and structure.
We've had people in and out of both these buildings as much as possible. One building's hardly getting engineered, you know, they don't make enough money to go in there, I guess, but we've had both the buildings inspected and looked over and walked through. We got a pretty firm idea what it's going to cost. In fact, I just, I've got two bids that are very, very recent on that demolition and they both come out pretty comparable, there's not much of a-
And you think that's about $60,000 to do the demolition?
Well, about $52,000 is what's coming out, I think. The last one I saw was about $52,000 to actually demolish it. And of course, that just, you have a big hole there, so you've still got to do some things to the property to make it, make it usable again.
Do you have anybody looking at that space or have you approached anybody?
For the vacant space?
When that building comes down, I mean, you were talking about offering that out there for redevelopment, is anybody looking at it?
Well, as far as the space next to it, that's going to become a, an amenity adjoined to the community center. We have, and of course, somebody came along and then dropped a pile of money at my desk and say, you see, you know, we'll find another way to entertain people in town. But as of right now, the, the intent is for the sake of maintaining that property and you use it as a, as a joint venture with our community center. Park area, so to speak. There's a lot of, there's a lot of run over that comes out of the community center and sometimes have that extra space, it would really, really be a, a nice amenity. In terms of the other building next door, we've got, or two or three doors down, I guess, depending on how you look at the addresses, that's the one we'll actually try to open up for development.
Absolutely. And so I'm just trying to be clear in my mind, so you're, you're looking at a project that includes two separate locations.
That's correct.
$131,000 would be the total for both.
That's correct.
But if I, in my mind, if I split the two projects, you got the demolition and revitalization of the site next to the Legion.
That's right.
At about $65,000.
Sounds correct.
And then revitalization of the building that you think you can restore and have put back into public hands ultimately for about $65,000.
That's right. And typically what I do when I look for funding is I'll break things into different phases. That way it helps us with timelines as far as construction timelines and, and funding opportunities. And some, some agencies want to fund one kind of project, they don't want to fund a different kind of project and just, it makes easier for you to organize it that way.
And, and should I put any merit on the idea that you have the demolition of the building that's fallen down as project one? Is that the one that's most important to you of these two projects?
To me, it's the most vital, just in the sense, not necessarily for economic development purposes, but for health hazard purposes.
You know, I hate to tell you, Brett, too bad you can't look around at your audience. You know, our assessor back there just salivating when he sees all these properties being improved and upgraded and so forth, you know, just adding more value to the tax roll, you know? Just wanted you to know that.
I wanted him to come by my house, that's all right.
Any questions for Brett? Brett, we appreciate the work you put in. Collins is, is doing some really, really good things, thanks.
Well, let me go, you break my knee again.
Yeah, you didn't even put your name on the ballot last time, did you?
No, I did not. That's all right.
Uh, next is Story City.
Mr. Jay brought home, edit reinforcement this time.
We're down on mic, so you're going to have to share.
Morning.
Morning, gentlemen.
Thanks for letting us be on the agenda today. We've got quite a few projects going in-
You're a guy, we know you a bit.
I'm sorry. Mike Jensen, mayor of Story City, and I'm going to speak just a little bit on some of the amenities that are in that north park that we're looking at enhancing. We have a 1913 carousel that's on the historical register there. And I don't know if any of you have ever been up there, but we had about 20,000 riders on that last year. It draws a lot of-
Not at one time.
Not at one time. Two riders. No, but they come from all over the world. We have a world map in the building there. And if you ever get up there, go take a look at that. It's from every country in the world, islands you've never heard of, they put push packs where they come from. And it's very interesting. And I've, my wife and I volunteer there some on weekends and run it for a couple hours and visit with some of those people. They never knew this was in Iowa and they'll be back, it's right off the interstate. And it's just a real draw for our community and the county and the state. And we want to enhance this park. We have a all-weather lodge there called Fairview Lodge and it's glassed-in area and overlooks the park. Beautiful place, got a kitchen, restrooms inside and out. And the Little League baseball diamond is there. We're constructing a brand-new swimming pool there. It's about maybe a third done right now. And they're in the process of having that done for us for opening next spring. And it's just, it's a great little park, a lot of green space and we're planning on doing a lot of things, but Mark will talk on that a little bit. But I, I just wanted to tell you about the carousel and some of the amenities that are in that park. And it really is a draw for the county and our community. We certainly appreciate the county board of supervisors supporting us in some of our past projects. It's, it's made a big difference, it draws a lot of people to the community. And people want amenities in all these small communities. If you look at any of the surveys out there, Trails is right up to the top on anything that we do and recreational items in the park system. And that's what we're trying to do here. And all the other communities have been here asking us to improve our community, make more people come to Story County, Story City, Collins, Max, all of us. And these TIF funds have been a real good thing for these small communities. We couldn't be getting this stuff done and drawing people, but we do without those funding. So we appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Mark?
Good morning. I'm Mark Jackson, the city administrator in Story City. I'll briefly, I'm not an elected official, so I'll be brief and take you through this project. I first should say that if the mayor of Cambridge is going to get dressed up, and I've known Scott, because he served on the 911 board, and spend a dollar, it must be a really great project. So I'll put in my plug for Cambridge and say that what he's doing, we have done in Story City, and those are great projects. So I really commend, want to commend Cambridge for what they're planning to do. But what we're looking at doing in the north park, and you know where the north park is, it's right on the main thoroughfare of Broad Street in Story City. And it kind of is connecting, as you see in that green area, the tennis courts down, which are right on Broad Street there. Really, it's more of some items, new lighting, new fencing. But one of the things we want to add there is a, a tennis wall and then what we would call a theater, because what we've been doing for the last number of years is we show movies in the park. And so right now, we hang a bed sheet, so to speak, on that fence. And so as we were looking at this project, we wanted to put something permanent there. And that kind of goes along with what Mayor Jensen was saying, it leads into the carousel and what improvements we can make there. And the real core of that is the amphitheater that we're going to place there right next to, to the carousel as well. And then, as you see, farther towards the top is the bandstand area. In fact, I think it was Mayor Jensen's father or grandfather, grandfather that built it back in the 1930s, in 1932. And so what we're looking at doing there is there's some work that needs done to the bandstel- band show. We want to put a roof on it and a picnic plaza area on that. So, and, and then, because a number of individuals are getting up there in, in years and it is difficult to walk in, in these parks and it's uneven, they are putting a trail that connects all three of these and with Fairview Lodge together as one. So we're trying to encompass these three things with a trail that connects all of that in that area there. So that's that project and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for us.
Yeah, so, so two things, specifically on this project, Mark. So it's all in north park, but it's kind of three separate things that you're talking about doing, all within the one park.
Lincoln, linked as one.
Talk to me about the, the other funding options that are out there, in addition to city. I'm not looking at just trying to put this all back on the city, but there are going to be some other funding options for it and some of these I would expect. Where do those reside and, and where do you see the biggest holes in trying to get a project like this done?
I don't know if there's going to be any, if we'll go for any cap funding on this or not. That's, that's sometimes, they've gotten more into swimming pools and that funding's been pulled back a little bit. I don't know if we'll go into anything like that, Chair Sanders. So I don't, I think it's going to be some of your, your dollars that we're requesting and then city on our, on our end.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
And, and talk to me about your capacity. So I mean, clearly you, you stuck it in here as 24% from you and Ted, but, but where are we?
It's interesting, it's a, it's a combination of TIF and we also have, the voters approved a capital improvement levy. It is, 80% of it is specifically geared towards improvements in the northern park and south parks. So this year, through some dollars that you gave, we're doing the south park, which is under construction right now. Some of those capital improvement levy dollars will be used for that as well. And that passed with, it was over 70% of the vote when that passed.
And what kind of dollars does that generate for you?
Oh, you know, we can generate anywhere between 30,000 and 40,000. So we, we generate some of those dollars from that as well.
Okay.
So that's where that project will come from. Now, if you want to get into a whole discussion on TIF and our capacity on that, we can do that as well.
Yeah.
You want to do that?
Well, you-
You want to do that?
Well, you, so this is my view. You're the professional Tiffer in this room right now. I mean, you've done as good a job, I think, as any mid-sized city administrator anywhere of utilizing TIF to the benefit of your community. So I'd love to hear anything, absolutely, anything you have to say on TIF.
You know, here's the thing, where we're at. We are paying off, there was a number of projects we've done, we did some years ago. It's a one-bond issue. And that's a huge bond that gets paid off in fiscal year 17 and 18. Okay? And so what we're doing is, we're doing a number of projects like this, they're smaller in nature, and that's estimated to cost about two and a half million. I mean, we're doing, and it's not just quality life, there's infrastructure stuff, it's a combination of things, one project. We'll actually be bonding out for less money than what we'll be paying annual bond-wise and what we're paying right now. So the other thing we look at as well is that in terms of TIF valuation. And so, it goes, in fact, if you can't go to your TIF valuation, doesn't it go to your general fund type of thing? You look over the history of Story City, when the Pella project came, the TIF value we used was anywhere from 45 to 48 million. So what we've tried to do is over the years, and as that got paid off, that valuation came down, we tend to go right in between 27 million and 31 million, and we hang right there. So the difference for us is that you see, where a number of communities, their TIF valuation is increasing, we have come down, and then we stay the same, and then with this project, we'll be probably going out a little bit as well. And so, I mean, and we project that stuff out in years ahead as well.
I hate to bring this topic up, but I'm going to do it anyway because I'm thinking about it.
Well, you don't have to.
When you think, when you think about some of the innovations and the things that you're doing, are you able to comment at all about your blue mall area out there? You know, it is really starting to go down. My wife, my wife used to love to go up there quite frequently, and there's only like one or two shops there. What do you see in the future of that? Is that something that ultimately is going to have to probably be sold to an outside vendor or?
What buy?
I wish I had the money. I wish I had the money, because I think there is some potential there. But I don't know if you wanted to comment just at all.
Well, that council meeting last night, that was discussed, and we've got another
meeting coming up where we're discussing that. The problem is getting it out of the hands of the owner, which is out in New Jersey. And Lord knows, we've tried, and we're still trying. And we have some options that we're going to be looking at shortly to do that. And I think there's some real future there, no matter whether the building is gone and something new, or the building is revitalized. But the business that's built that, built the building and got everybody in there, and that mall was really going good when the stores were there. But over the years, the owner decided he's going to, I think, use that for a tax write-off and hasn't been renewing leases. A year ago, we had four businesses that wanted to go in there until they found out the situation with the owner. And so that is a big problem getting that out of our hands. We don't want to go through condemnation. That kind of hurts our TIF and everything else. And we just don't do that, try not to.
Well, I hate to bring up true subject, but every time I drive by there, that's just something that comes to mind, and my wife always comments, you know, "I've had them."
It's a great place to buy blue jeans and shirts and stuff. And they are still busy back there.
Yeah, that one's still good.
Busy as a little kitchen store, and they do not want to go for any of them.
I think you'll be reading and hearing more about that in the short term, because of what the mayor has indicated. I mean, we've started having some preliminary discussions several years ago, but now it's moving more to the forefront, I would say at this point. So you'll be hearing more of that. Now, you know, with that space there now, the county needs some space, you know? I know, we might give you a good rent. So you might want to keep that in mind, an area up there. You know, and interesting, I want, real quickly, Chair, if I may, in terms of this program that you have here, as I was sitting there thinking about this, it really is very similar to the state's Vision Iowa Cat Grant thing. I mean, if you want to look at how this program is modeled, it really is to take a few dollars, let's say X amount of dollars, from the county and leverage that to more dollars at the local level to do these projects that help our communities improve themselves and thrive in the quality of life. And so economic development now is attracting people. So you're here with all these different cities and what they're doing, and this is what this is meant for. So I kind of look at it, this is mirrored after the state, and this is a good project, because it makes us think of, how can we stretch ourselves to do something?
Sure.
This project here was on our radar. It stretched us to, okay, let's do this now, rather than small pieces, we can do this now.
Yep. And I appreciate that, Mark. I was actually going to ask you to also comment, you've been an active participant for many years on the Story County Economic Development Group. Wayne referred to it earlier today, although Wayne, you said like 80,000, I think it was more like 55,000 that would want to do that group.
That was initially, that was what was used.
And so what was budgeted was in the 85 range, it was just 55. But I just wanted you to comment on what you've seen over the last X number of years, how that group has evolved and the county's participation in what we're doing there.
I think, you know, what it's doing is, we used to meet maybe once or twice a year. And I think, again, what it gets down to is, now we're doing, where we're looking at more partnerships between each other. I think that we do, I think the communication, we've always had it, particularly with the larger communities. But we work more closely together, now we're going to four meetings. I missed the last meeting, so I hear I'm now the president again, or pro-president? Did I hear you? What's that?
That's what you get for messed up meeting.
That's a better title. So I think the more dollars, it's just helped us to, again, you see the other communities and what they're doing now. And I think that's the key of it, is that it helps us stretch ourselves and how we can take it to that next level.
Marty, any questions for Story City?
I am pleased to hear that city administrator has the ability to reduce a TIF asking, that it gives, you know, people have a working idea of what TIF does, and they know the evaluations that the legislature goes through to incur that TIF. But I think the bigger story here is that most of the communities within the county, TIF are now TIF zones, and the county itself has its own TIF policy. How many TIF zones do you have in Story City?
Well, it's legally one, but it's in five different areas. Now, and let's, I mean, I'm going to clarify something with that. Just because it's TIF, doesn't mean you use all the valuation in there. Now, I could, I'm going to be off just a little bit, because every year I call my favorite person at the auditor and say, okay, what's my total TIF valuation? And it's around that 70 million dollars. But I'm using 30 million dollars of it. So we say it's in a TIF district, doesn't necessarily mean all the valuation in that district is being used. So that's one thing that kind of is a misconception about TIF, is it's TIF, so we're using all of it. No, not necessarily.
Right. And you've got an informal cap on yourself. We actually put a formal cap of 50% on anything we do.
Right. So. Like Mark's assessment, do we try to stay down in the middle part of that TIF zone?
Well, no, it's just one of those things that, with a 20-year working life with TIF zone, that, you know, it's one of those things, people, you know, you hear the horror stories going forth on some communities that, once it's on, it's forever.
Yeah.
And then a TIF that was created was before.
The pre-95 districts, yeah. And one of our, in our district, where he's, you're talking about the mall and some of that area out there, is one of those pre-95 districts. But, you know, again, if you, the more TIF value you use, it takes away from your general fund valuation. And that's the area we know that we don't want to be taking with to do this. So I think we've tried to be judicious.
Well, not going to be a point, I guess to the point, what I get is the fact that you have dialed it back to the point where, you know, you're being, you're offsetting the needs within the communities, because taking from one sometimes takes from another.
Well, I said it, I said it as they were coming up, and I'll say it again, I believe that Story City does as good a job as any mid-sized community in utilizing TIF. It is a tool. It's a tool that can be misused, and if it's misused, it can have tragic consequences. We actually modeled a lot of what we're trying to do here in the county after a lot of what Story City does.
So that'd be a terrible tool to lose for our small communities. So to abuse it is not good for our office.
It's refreshing and rewarding to hear that, just after we've approached that model, because that will cause some conversations within my community.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you guys for coming out into the communities. Now, the last several years, you have set up meetings where all the communities come and talk about these things invisibly, and I think that's a wonderful, I appreciate this.
Absolutely.
I just haven't got enough food when I come.
Yeah, the meeting has food now, Wayne will be there. Thank you, guys. We're going to take a two-minute recess, we'll let those that are ready to go, go, and then we'll get started with the rest of our agenda. Sorry about that, we're in the middle of this water challenge here in Story County. It means that you take a recess after about an hour. When we come back in, did you need to say anything? We just move on. Marty, let's go. All right, I will call us back into session, and we are down to consideration of minutes from July 28th. Any notations, additions, or corrections? Clinton?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Minutes passed, personnel actions as listed, board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second. Chitty?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions passed. Consent agenda, please add road closures 1703 through 1707, and utility permits 1706 through 1708. I move.
What's the number of changes? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Chitty?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passes. We have a public hearing item today. That item is consideration of Resolution 1708, the FY17 budget amendment. Good old Lisa Mark. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Phil does, I'll be here to see you soon. I talked to you three weeks ago about the budget amendment. It was published in all three newspapers, I shall actually first, as required. In this budget amendment, the revenues are increasing overall by 1.8 million from the original budget, which is 4.4%. Two items in the revenues are being amended at this point in time, 370,000 of miscellaneous revenues and 1.5 of the blood proceeds, which we did take yesterday.
Good.
It's really early in the year to determine any more revenue projections or to amend any more revenues, so that will be saved more later to finish rolling. Just specific for these two items. Expenses are increasing by 2.3 million from the original budget, which is a 5.75% increase. In order to not exceed expenses by service areas, which is how we budget, we can make a nice mix cut, right? 370,000 is by liability selections.
Which is money in, money out.
Right. 155,000 is for bonding and related costs, and 1.8 is related to purchase of animal control building and TIF budget.
Okay.
Don't know much for the spend bill half this year, we have the bond proceeds, so money in and the flows in there.
Yeah, so animal control, we had in last year's budget, and we did close on the building, so we're carrying that forward.
Yeah, I think there's, it was on your agenda, we're closing, we're closing highest 15,000. And that FYI is paid, is going to be paid for half by the county and half by.
Friends, which is all by the county.
Friends of animals.
Friends of animals.
Not a lot of fund balances are corrected in this case, but I have re-estimated the general fund by 28% after this amendment. Any questions?
Questions for Lisa? All right, in that case, I will open the public hearing and ask us if there's anyone who would like to address Resolution 1708. Last chance. Seeing no one move into the microphone, we'll close the public hearing, turn to the board for action.
Move Resolution 1708, the FY17 budget amendment, as presented.
Second, Deb.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? Clinton?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes.
I thought you said it was here for me.
There's still a lot of people here. Now we'll move on to additional items, and that is consideration of Resolution 1709, appropriations amendment. Now that you got the money, you want to be able to spend it, huh?
Please.
All right.
So I'm amending two departments, appropriations, animal control by 200,000, as I just stated, that department is paying for animal control, and non-departmental, which is countywide services, by 2.5%.
And primarily in that is the ISU research fund. Questions for Lisa? If not, I'd take a motion on 1709.
I would move to approve Resolution 1709, FY17 appropriations.
Second.
A motion in the second, further discussion? Chitty?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. 1709 passes. Thanks, Lisa? All right, everybody can leave now, Lisa's done. Discussion and consideration of FY18, funding priorities for asset. Deb Shuldorff. Good morning, Deb.
Good morning, board. That's how many you're getting where we talk about the funding and priorities for assets. Each funding involved in the asset process is required to do this. And over the years, the county's priorities haven't changed all that much, but we did make some modifications to these that I want to bring to your attention as far as what those modifications are. But before I go into that, I think, just as a brief overview of the asset process and for Marty's benefit and those in the audience as well, the asset process has been in place since 1985 and involves the funders of the City of Ames, Iowa State University through their Iowa State, GNSB, that we're in student body, United Way of Story County, Story County, now, no Health Regions, and Iowa Community Services. And GNSB have been involved as a partner, and they are currently withdrawing, we're having some more conversations with them about that, but their involvement was more from a coordination standpoint. They had provided volunteers at one point in time, but stopped doing that, and they have also withdrawn their funding now for the asset administrative person. So, but we still have a bulk of the funders at the table, they all come with their own priorities that the volunteers then use when looking at service requests from each of the agencies. There's about 30 agencies involved in the asset process, a little over $3 million going towards all those services, almost 100 services provided. And a little over $3 million this current fiscal year. Story County has just a little over $1 million going into the process that does include the public health grant that we get from the state. The county is funding about 60 services provided by 20 agencies. So that's kind of an overview of assets. The county has significantly increased its funding towards those services, especially through the Jungle Basic funding source over the last six years.
Marty, this has been a priority for the board. When Paul Too was here, the three of us recognized a couple, like we recognized that the asset process is a fairly unique program in Iowa, and it really, really works for Story County. It's a great way to bring funders and those providing services to the table, make sure we're not duplicating services where it's not necessary, make sure that all the entities have skin in the game where appropriate. And so this, the board prior to you had made a huge commitment to trying to make sure that we could continue to fill our role as basically one of the three primary. And so this, the, the board prior to you had made a huge commitment to trying to make sure that we could continue to fill our role as basically one of the three primary funders. And while there's other funders involved and they're really appreciated, it is truly United Way, Ames, and Story County that have the most skin in the game in terms of funding this.
So the priorities that are proposed for fiscal year 18, um, and it tie in, uh, what the board has worked on in terms of our strategic plan for the county. So that involves a statement about coordination and communication among stakeholders and private and public funding sources to help with the human service needs for Story County citizens. That's kind of the overarching statement, um, going forward. Services that are funded by the county must be accessible and available county-wide. And our emphasis is on promoting self-sufficiency and supporting affordable housing and transportation. That's been a longstanding priority, we've just kind of shortened the wording to make it a little more concise. On the safety, health, and well-being of children and adults. Here's another priority that we've made some modifications to, and it does dovetail then with what's in our strategic plan. Accessible medical services, including substance abuse and co-occurring mental health and substance abuse services. In the strategic plan, uh, we worked with the sheriff's office on addressing the needs that the jail is seeing on an ongoing basis in terms of inmates needing substance abuse services or co-occurring services. So we want to be able to tie that in with the county's priorities through the asset process.
So Deb, let me just start right there and let's talk this through again for Marty and anybody else who's interested. Four or five years ago, the concept of co-occurring disorders, which is a very real thing, uh, was something that was on the forefront, was something that we, we and others were talking about regularly. At that point, we still had the Richmond Center here and they were, uh, served in conjunction with CFR to provide, um, uh, services for, for both and co-occurring disorders. We clearly, um, went through a rocky patch there where Richmond Center stopped being the mental health center for Story County. Uh, I think through that, we also lost some contact with CFR, uh, which I think is really unfortunate. But I think this is an effort to try to get back to recognizing that it is, in many cases, a co-occurring disorder with the mental health and substance abuse. Try to re-establish our very solid relationship with CFR. I didn't know if you wanted to address that at all for anybody here.
Yep. You teed it off, as you were stating earlier, yes, we would like to, um, uh, re-engage with the CFR agency. They are the primary substance abuse provider for adults here in Story County. Youth and Shelter Services also provide substance abuse services, I believe they serve up to age 24, 25. So there is some overlap there, but we, we do want to, um, have those conversations and find out from the substance abuse side of things what, what is being provided, what's needed. Especially now in the new era of the managed care organizations and what's funded by Medicaid and how, um, the local, um, community can assist, um, in whatever way for CFR to provide the services that are necessary. And the jail had had a relationship with them in the past, with some services being provided directly to the inmates while they were, um, there in the jail. So we, we just want to revisit that, the City of Ames is interested in that as well as United Way. So, um, we'll be working on that here, um, in the very near future. And then lastly, um, the prevention and early intervention services that provide outreach, advocacy, and academic success. So we want to again, um, work that into any, um, before or after-school programming, any literacy programming, financial counseling, those kinds of things, um, that would help individuals be self-sufficient and be school-ready, um, and, and meet their own needs as they enter into adulthood. So we want to put an emphasis on those services as well. And we're already funding, I'll use Raising Readers for now as an example, they've got Drive by Five and some advocacy programs, the, uh, library reason, and the reading partners that we're assisting with. And so we'll be able to expand on that by changing this definition a little bit.
Deb, are you able to comment at all on, uh, the crisis stabilization discussions that we are trying to generate through the regions? And, uh, and of course, I'm still, uh, interested because, uh, we probably will see some efforts in the next few years with the Children's Mental Health Workgroup in trying to see what services are available and where the coordination lies there. But, uh, I know that there's been some preliminary, uh, discussions going on and I didn't know if you wanted to comment at all regarding this.
Yep, I sure can. And I think that's, it's important to point out, um, with the region at the table in the asset process, we can continue that coordination and that communication as far as what they're seeing as their funding priorities going forward. Crisis services is definitely part of that, um, in terms of the crisis stabilization or, or, um, observation center or whatever it may end up looking like. We have had some conversations with Mary Greeley Medical Center in the region on what that may look like, um, who may be providing those services, what kind of medical backup we'll need, whether it be a nurse practitioner or psychiatrist or, um, RNs who are, um, are well versed in crisis services. So we will continue with that, we, you know, identify a location where that might be able to happen. So we're hoping that we can get some, um, additional feet under the, under the idea and get that moving in this fiscal year so that we can, um, provide those services and help alleviate the stress that's, that's placing, um, emergency rooms, um, law enforcement, um, all those things.
Not only have we identified a location, we've budgeted dollars to renovate that location to make it suitable for this, just the county can't be in the business of providing the service. We've got to have a service provider, and I believe that starts, whether it completely resides with Mary Greeley, it at least starts with Mary Greeley. And we've got to figure out who can adequately provide the service.
And the region is definitely at the table, assisting with those conversations.
Uh, the only other thing I'd like to point out is, uh, Marty, more for you, so where, where the funders come together, primarily the City of Ames will fund services for residents of Ames. And the county's dollars for those services will go to provide the services to anybody who is not a resident of Ames, resident of Story County but not a resident of Ames. And that has seemed to work really, really well. Anything else that you'd add for, for Marty? As we talk about asset. So no major changes, we just, we expanded a couple definitions to allow us to more closely mirror what we came, came through with our, with our recent C2C plan. Questions for Deb?
Now, just when you get here, you realize that a program that's been around since 1985, it's either going to be something that's just maybe by an inertia or it's actually serving. I'd have to say more than I have dug in thinking about asset, this is one of those things that anything you could tweak on a delivery basis, you should be doing that, is the end, the board should be doing, I think, that with Deb's stewardship on this one, that's where we're at.
I think it's also fair to say that when we first formed the regions, uh, they really didn't understand, uh, the coordination and the collaboration that went on in the asset process. And so Deb did an excellent job, uh, at the time that she was, uh, leading that organization, uh, to, to provide a network about, uh, its involvement. I think little by little now, uh, they, they've become quite comfortable, uh, with that process. But, you know, when other counties have not had that type of, uh, funding mechanism, uh, you know, it's sometimes difficult, uh, for them to fully grasp. And to my knowledge, and I don't know Deb if you're aware, but I, in checking with other counties through the ISAC, I don't think there's anyone else that actually has a similar model with all three of the entities there. There are different programs where some of them do use United Way in a similar manner, but I don't think the coordination, uh, exists with panel and, and all the groups coming together to prioritize or to, uh, agree on a funding level and all of those kinds of things.
Alright, I'd take a motion to approve the priorities if there's nothing else to add.
So move.
Motion in the second, further discussion? Deb, anything to add? Alright, uh, Clinton?
Aye.
Kitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Funding priorities are set, thanks Deb.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is discussion consideration of violence in the workplace policy after our seven-day review, Alyssa Whitnall. Uh, I'm going to start this, Alyssa, by saying that I received two comments, one, uh, uh, from our assessor and one from a citizen. The citizen asked us to, uh, expand this to include everyone, including all members of the public. I responded and, and let him know that that's, uh, not a possibility for us, unfortunately, we are, by the way, unfortunately, in this case, we're bound by Iowa code that clearly says that a political subdivision of state cannot, uh, infringe on those rights. Uh, our, our assessor has asked that we put up signage, that we have more security cameras and we put up more signage, uh, just, I'm going to say encouraging people not to carry weapons in here. And, and my response, uh, owing to that is I think security cameras is some, is a place that the board has been moving, we're, we're trying to get there with more security cameras. For me, you're going to have a hard time convincing me to post a sign that we don't have a, a policy or ordinance to back up, to have a sign just for a sign. And so I'm going to struggle with that. Those are the two comments that I received.
And if I could just piggyback on that, and I was going to reference this a little bit later as we get through. But after, uh, attending the, uh, Violence in the Workplace, the Active Shooter, uh, program, uh, with our, uh, provider, uh, with Dr. Nescos, Susan Osher and I, uh, I was able to talk directly to, uh, one of the lead presenters, uh, that took us through that training. And they cautioned any county or any group that actually using signage, uh, uh, for that purpose because it gives a false sense of security, uh, within that particular, uh, uh, jurisdiction. And he says the chances of liability could be even greater, uh, by doing so. And there were several members in the audience and, and counties that had those. And boy, I saw eyes blow up and they said, well, they needed to go back and rethink about that. The whole idea, again, as you say, is just to kind of encourage people not to bring it, but, you know, the law says that they can. So it, it puts the county in a kind of a, a difficult situation. So when I received the Wayne's, uh, current email as well, I thought of the exact same thing, uh, that while we probably would not want to necessarily have the signage, and I don't know whether, uh, uh, too far, I may want to comment on this, but, you know, when the law first came in, you know, we even talked to our judges about the Justice Center. And just having, uh, the authority, uh, in the court area, uh, in the court chambers and the hallways there. And, uh, they didn't want to move forward at that time to even borrow, uh, use of bringing weapons into that area. So without having law, you know, the judges willing to take an active role, uh, in a facility such as that, you could see the complexity of that law and why, you know, uh, we might need to take some other things. So I think a little bit later, as we go through this and with Alyssa's help and with Deb's leadership now, our safety committee is going to really try to do a lot more to make sure that we're doing everything that we possibly can, uh, to educate our employees, uh, about the potential threats and dangers that are out there. And, uh, try to exercise, uh, as much, uh, uh, preparation as we possibly can. We, we never hoped that we will have these situations, uh, but, uh, the reality, uh, one of the things that I learned in that, uh, situation, it's not always the larger municipalities, uh, that receive this. Sometimes it's more or less the outlying areas, uh, that, uh, or doesn't appear, uh, to be as high-profile as, as one might think. And, uh, but I believe, uh, Susan did share the, uh, link, uh, from what we got from that workshop, but I would have to say that that was truly one of the most, uh, moving, uh, experiences that I had, uh, as we think about the role of active shooters. And with what has happened in, uh, uh, I believe it was Jackson County, um, you know, supervisors there presented and talked about, you know, their encounter, as well as, uh, I did find that there are several other county supervisors, uh, that, uh, they have taken actions to, uh, at least have, uh, the board supervisors, uh, ability to, uh, carry. So it's an interesting dynamics, uh, I think the majority of counties have not quite moved that far yet, but there's just a few people that are doing this. I think this is a very timely discussion for us to have, uh, and I would also like to say that for you two, uh, and I know Supervisor Sanders said earlier that he, uh, was not aware of this policy, uh, but this goes to show you that it never came up. I was aware of it, uh, because at the time, we were talking about it, as soon as the law came into play, our county attorney's office and several others, you know, had talked about some of the pitfalls as to why we didn't want to do this. But this is another example that, you know, people assume we talk all the time about things which we don't, unless it really comes up here in the board meeting, you know, you wouldn't probably, uh, have recollection to that. But, uh, Alyssa and I did spend a lot of time yesterday, uh, just updating me since I was gone last week, uh, when, uh, this was approved for the seven-day review. And I certainly was very appreciative of the time we spent together. So Alyssa, I'll turn it back to you now and, uh...
So Alyssa, since we went through all this last week and now we're, we're discussing it again after, uh, opportunity for our staff and members of the public to comment, give us the high points of how we got here. So, so this board referred it back to the safety committee and to you to dig into, take a look at what other counties were doing, what our insurance companies were, were comfortable with. Tell us where the language came from, primarily came from, and how we got where we are today.
Okay. Our current policy, I just want to outline, uh, just real briefly, does not allow employees to bring weapons into the business. So, uh, we have, we have not allowed that except the policy did say certified by police officers. Um, when looking at that policy when it was first brought up, we have had a change out of sheriff's office years ago, um, that they now have detention officers in the jail and they are allowed to carry, um, according to their job responsibilities. So looking at that, our policy was updated and we didn't even make an update to that. So we did, um, I brought it to the board, the old policy, we had a discussion, um, you gave me direction to go back and find out what other counties and cities are doing, take it to the safety committee. We did take a side into the safety committee with, uh, came up with some language that we took directly from the Polk County.
From Polk County.
From Polk County's Violence in the Workplace policy, their, their portion of the weapons, what would, um, how that's handled. The rest of it, um, we kind of looked at our old policy and, and just made some changes to bring it up to date.
Did you let our insurance carrier review what we were proposing?
Yes, both, both the liability insurance carrier and our workers compensation area did review that language. And they, um, they felt that that was sufficient, um, for, for their purposes.
Okay, did you receive any comments other than the two that I've mentioned?
I did, I got, I got a comment from an elected official, um, that they had their staff return, review the policy, um, had similar comments, um, they said, do not create a double standard, either ban all weapons for everyone, or if individuals have the permit, permitted right to carry, allow those to do so. The elected official felt it's a good policy and, um, what the county decides for its employees is a separate topic. That came from our auditor's office.
Yeah, and, and, you know, that, so that gets really, really close to home for me because I personally feel really, really strongly that there's something wrong when, if you're sitting in those chairs, you're, it's appropriate for you to be carrying, and if you're sitting in one of these chairs, it's not appropriate for you to be carrying. That said, that's where I come down personally. That said, we refer this to you and the safety committee for a reason, for you to dig into it, look at the insurance and what their comfort is. I think there's some OSHA standards that the county could be in trouble if we did not have a, uh, a strong Violence in the Workplace policy. I take that stuff really, really seriously and I recognize that sometimes my personal views on, on an issue are not exactly what, what makes the most sense for us to do up here. And, and so I come down and I say, you know what, to put in a policy like this, the board is empowered to do that, we're not empowered to, as I, as I read the law, we're not empowered to eliminate the opportunity for members of the public to, to carry when they, uh, are certified. So that's where we are. Questions or comments?
You mentioned, uh, OSHA, did you speak to potentialities there?
Sure, sure, OSHA, the OSHA Act of, or the OSHA Act 1970 has a general duty clause. And in that, in that, it just says that employers shall provide, um, places of employment which are free from recognized hazards that are likely to cause, um, death or serious physical harm. Now, now in researching that, I couldn't find anything that says if you allow your employees to bring weapons that you will, and there is a fatality because of that, that, that you will be cited by OSHA. But that liability does lie out there. But that liability does lie out there and we do take those, that into consideration when we develop our policies. If you ever have OSHA come in and do an investigation, that's the first thing they're going to look at, they're going to look at your policies and procedures and then see whether you did enough as an employer to create that safe working environment for your employees.
Thank you. Other questions for Alyssa?
Not so much as a question, but I wanted to share that, you know, I've gone back and forth from the first time that you referenced your personal views and looking at the state statute and then trying to say, why wouldn't we want to treat all employees the same as the general public? And I wrestled with that back and forth and I shared this with Alyssa yesterday. And then we started looking at industry standards and what other companies do and how many, you know, people really want to have that environment of right to carry in the workplace. And yet from this seminar that I sat in on, active shooters, when you read about a couple of the mass killings and oftentimes it's disgruntled citizens either for revenge or power or disgruntled employees. And again, it's either revenge or power or sometimes just workplace avengers. And so when you think about the potential that you might have, not to say that, you know, any county would be subject to have this, the fact that people would have a right to carry and for whatever reason they were upset, would that be potentially a lightning rod for them to act in a more violent way? And I guess I referred to Alyssa in HR and what's happening out in the standard. So I also took this time to just share comments with my active coffee group. They love to, you know, talk about county issues when I bring them up. And so I kind of took the opposite approach, more or less one of just adhering to the state law and trying to get feedback. And I was kind of surprised that the direction that a lot of the members took. And one of the concerns that stood out to me was even if you had a situation where individuals were certified or authorized to carry, would you want it to be visible? Would you want people to, you know, actively be showing that they, you know, have a weapon in their person? Another question was, is how about individual departments designating individuals on a rotating basis? And so the more we talked about it, the more complex the issue became. And so for me, I said, you know, is the workplace employees the best place for us to open this up as suggested from the one email that you referenced? And I guess I've come to the situation that the policy that we've had in place was there for a purpose. I think it is effective. I think the changes that we have put in place now where there are certain people who are authorized to carry because of their, the scope of their duties and responsibility does sit well with me. And I think we are a far better society and a far better place for us to adhere to the policy that is currently in place rather than opening this up and treating it according to state law.
I would not disagree. I use the reasonable person mantra when deciding something, it is worthy, the fact that we have state statutes that say what the board can and cannot do. I spent yesterday afternoon playing, going over his concerns. I don't disagree with Chairman Sanders' signage, I don't believe is addressed with any technology going forward as you see it in various offices here within the building as budgeting permits. That might be a direction we should be looking at. You have to be mindful that you're steward of the people's funds and as well as their government and putting it, vetting it through our safety committee, vetting it through our HR department and coming back with the answers that you have gives me comfort. The fact that we're seeking to address what we perceive to be as a legitimate concern brought to us and we'll probably be moving towards it. We are marrying virtually what Polk County is doing. Our insurance agencies are telling us this is something that we're backed. We need to be mindful that even today, when we're just having an esoteric conversation, this could be an issue that could come before us and we need to be aware of that. I don't think we have the ability to be completely in a position that we can offer perfect safety, but we still are open to do the people's business and we are in the setting we find ourselves. We, I think, are making a positive direction that we are going to offer action in a way that I think serves our county government and its employees. But once again, I believe the power is vested within the board. I feel comfortable with retaining a half of it.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I have made no big secret that I am the holder of a concealed carry permit. And when you see me away from here from time to time, I will be exercising that right. I'm a believer in the Second Amendment. I do however, recognize that for the people, the three of us included, that are employed here in Story County, this is a place of business. And the reality is if any tool or weapon or anything that doesn't go as part of you doing your job, then it's probably not appropriate to be carrying it. That was underscored for me with what our insurance carriers had to say, the fact that it could put us in additional liability with OSHA. It just struck home to me that just because I firmly believe in the right does not mean it's appropriate at all times for all people. And that's where I'm coming down on this thing. It's different than where I thought I would come down on this thing. And Alyssa, I appreciate you digging in. I mean, this wasn't easy to look at, especially knowing how the chairman of the board of supervisors felt about the whole thing. I appreciate you taking a hard look at the policy and coming back with what I think is a really solid recommendation for us going forward. And the reality that Polk County is the largest county in the state of Iowa and they've been dealing with these kinds of issues for a long time, I think that's a nice place to start with this language. So thanks. Anything further?
None.
If not, I'd take a motion to adopt the policy as presented.
So move.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Alyssa, anything else?
Yes, again, I mean, I can't underscore the importance and the time that I spent with Alyssa yesterday. I mean, I think we had some great discussions and so forth, and I think that helps to be able to bounce ideas off of people and using her background in HR and so forth and recognizing what our responsibilities and authorities are as a board and with our employees and so forth in a workplace, I think was tremendous thing for me to sit and listen to and so forth because it does give you an entirely different perspective somewhat. So I want to thank you for taking that time yesterday. It was a lot longer than I thought.
Yeah, Wayne, a lot of times, a lot of times I'll walk out here and I'll, just knowing you, I'll have an idea of how you're going to feel about any given topic. Honestly, walking in here today, I didn't have any idea where you're going to come down. I know you feel strongly on both sides of the issue and I know you're taking this really seriously. And Marty, since, you know, this is, this is one of the big things that we're dealing with, that's drawn a lot of public attention, I appreciate you digging in and figuring out where we're at. So we've got a motion to the second, Clint?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It is now policy. Thanks, Alyssa. Let's see, no agency reports, no departmental reports. We are down to our consultation meeting between the board of supervisors and the affected taxing entities concerning proposed amendments to the urban renewal plan. So where we started, we end up. Leanne, come on up and take us through this. All right, so we felt it was important to have this consultation be in conjunction with the projects that were being proposed. This is an opportunity for the affected taxing entities to hear what's going on, hear what the plans of the counties are, make comments today if you would wish, but more importantly, make comments in writing in the next seven days if you have areas that you would like the board to consider or amend as part of this plan. Leanne, take it from there if I missed something or if there's something you want to add.
The only thing I do want to add that notices did go out around the 20th or 21st. We did send out over 100 notices to the taxing entities. And just for the public's benefit, the taxing entities that didn't receive notice were those school districts and townships and cities, official villages that have either existing projects or proposed projects, excuse me, proposed projects or existing or proposed properties are tipped on state law that has been notified from today's meeting. The deadline then for comments to be in writing to the chair of the board of supervisors would be a week from today, so seven days. And then following the timeframe, the board has opportunity to respond to.
And next week, we will acknowledge anything that we receive in writing. Right? And so if anybody has anything they want to put in, you can send me an email, you can give me a handwritten note, whatever you want, and we'll make sure it gets in the record. Is there anybody, Arden, would anybody like to address anything today?
Yeah, Arden Greiner from Sherman Township. Thanks for the time, I'll try to be brief. Listening to the presentations today, I got to realize the town of Cambridge is mostly in a TIF district, the mayor said. And Story City's got $70 million in possible...
Available, right.
...available 31 or 2731. I think it'd be interesting to know what the total TIF valuations in the county are from all these, all the cities.
You're talking about available TIF funding? Because that's somewhere, that's somewhere just over $30 million, I believe. I'm saying if we didn't take, if we didn't limit ourselves to half, all in, I think there's about $30 million.
Story County.
For what we've put in today.
No, I'm asking something completely different.
Oh, you're saying with the cities.
Why the value is that the cities have already tipped? Because, because from Cambridge, they're going to fund 1.6 million over the next 10 years from TIF valuation. So they're going to over $160,000 a year. So I'd like to know, still, there's the point where, we'll use Cambridge for an example, if they're not paying $160,000 a year into the general fund because it's TIF, they're keeping that to use in their community.
Right, but it doesn't only come from Cambridge, right? So when they TIF, just like when the county TIFs, a portion of that, so for Story County, roughly figure 28% of any growth comes to Story County. The majority of it goes to school system. You've also got the township involved, you've got D-MAG involved, you've got multiple places to there. When you TIF it, it puts it all into one pot. So when Cambridge does it, if you want to say 160, it's not 160 straight out of their general fund. Some of it's coming from money that would be coming to the county, some of it's coming from what would be going into the Ballard School District, right? There's multiple places.
So the point I'm getting at is these are funds that would be going to the county, some of these funds would be going to the county if they wouldn't be being tipped.
Yes.
So then when they come to us asking for more TIF funding from the county in general, they're actually, they're drawing TIF from two different sources.
It depends on how you see the benefit, absolutely. The other, the other important thing...
They're tipping money from going to the county and they're coming to the county and wanting TIF funding.
They're wanting county assistance to do a project. Absolutely true, Arden. So the other thing to consider in this is if actually with the current setup of the state, and we've got to keep a close eye to see if this ever changes, it means new dollars coming into the county. So, and I'm going to give you real rough dollars, we'll use your $160,000, right? If half of that is going into the Ballard School System, Ballard has the highest levy rate of any school system in Story County. If half of that 160 is coming out of the Ballard School System, so $80,000, the state is backfilling 90% of that. So it's 90% of new dollars, so 180, that's...
It's not quite average, it's like 87.
Yeah, almost 90% back to, so that's new state dollars that are following a project like that. So in essence, the state is putting dollars into building something like this.
So the state taxpayers are back...
Absolutely. I want as many state dollars, Story County is a net payer. There's more money flowing out of Story County than into. I'd like to see as much of it come back and benefit Story County as possible.
Okay. I'm going to put in a request, I think, from now that you break down all the TIF funding for all the cities in the county. Now, a whole different direction here. As a rural, as a resident of the rural area, you know, I don't have a mayor, I don't have a city council to go to. So, and I don't think I'm available, I can't get tax abatements on a new house living in the rural area. Where I think when you live in a city, you get tax abatements, can't you?
If the city, if the city offers that.
They offer. So if I live in a city, I can get tax abatements through the city council. As a rural resident, who represents me?
We do, your township trustees do. You do, right? Your township trustee or supervisor represents you, your township trustee represents you.
I'm still not eligible for tax abatements on new homes.
I don't think there's any preclusion from something like that being put in at the county level. It's never been put in at the county level. If you're interested in something like that, propose it, we'll see if it's legal and we'll consider it.
No, I'm just trying to point out the differences between the city...
If you're trying to suggest that there's differences between living in a municipality and living outside his valley, I'd say absolutely. I'd say start with your tax bill. You're paying a heck of a lot less in taxes than you'd be paying if you were living in a city.
Okay. That's pretty murky and hard to understand.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that.
Good questions asked, too, Arden. Don't get us wrong, because he's...
Cities are coming with money, funding, you know, from...
Well, this board to this point, Arden, and you've been part of, like I say, I say every time you come up, you have been a consistent voice in this and I've really appreciated it. I mean, I know you and I don't always see eye to eye, but I've really appreciated that you've been a consistent voice. This board, and I won't even put Marty in this, I mean, we're, we've got to figure out where Marty stands on a lot of these things, but when Paul Souk was with us, this board determined that it was in Story County's best interest to participate, specifically with our smaller towns, to participate in these kinds of projects to try to leverage some improvements in the county. I think we've been successful in that. I think up there where you live, Zering is a great example. Some of the things that have happened in Zering don't happen without county involvement. They, it just doesn't happen. I think it's been a real benefit to Zering that that's happened. Now, we can sure debate the merits, and you and I do debate the merits all the way through, but that's the philosophy that this board has taken to this point.
Yeah, and I was just surprised today when you realize that most of the town in Cambridge is TIF.
Yeah, I think it's a real important question. Julie, how hard is it to put together that information of everything? So we'll get that and we'll make sure that next Tuesday we have that available. Okay? Thanks, Arden. Is there anybody else who'd like to address this? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up, sure.
I've just got a brief question.
Sure.
One thing that was not...
Oh, wait, wait.
Where'd you get it?
I'm waiting for your phone. We're being recorded?
We are.
Testing, testing.
Start by introducing yourself.
Jerry Lynn, Grand Township trustee.
Yep.
Welcome.
Thank you, Jerry.
Always good to see a fresh, friendly face. It's not the road a piece, you know?
That would be major.
Anyway, on this list of urban renewal stuff that was sent to us, there's not one mention of 600 Street. It's near and dear to my heart, you know?
Yep. And are we talking about just the portion between...
One mile will pay.
Yeah, that's already in the budget, we're not using any TIF funding to do it.
So it's done deal.
It's done deal, I believe, our county engineer's not here, I believe he's gone ahead and secured the right of way, I believe they're in planning right now. I think you're going to see construction either next spring or next fall. That one mile will be paid.
Good job.
No TIF funding.
What's one quarter of a mile of 590 at this...
To the bridge. That's already been paid. We did it, we did it as part of Vetor. So we TIFed Vetor when they came in and started to build, that was, that was the only non-wind tower property that we put in this. And we used, so I think, off the top of my head, the total valuation when it was at Ag Land was like $83,000. We were collecting taxes on $83,000 at Ag Land and I think it went somewhere in the $9 million range when they built it. So we TIFed that and used those TIF funds specifically just to pay their entry, right there from 30, basically up to the bridge right there on 590.
You also went down the bike path on County Road.
Yeah.
You had the full pump, full pool. There were two projects, Jerry, that were done, debated with the tipping, that came in, that when this was introduced, 11 or 12.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay. Just one more point.
Sure, sure.
There's windmill south of that intersection at 590. There's windmill south of that intersection at 590. Why then did you not put this in there to basically finish a mud road turned into a real road? So that those, the company that owns that windmill can have access to it rather than they take it off of Highway 30 and put it through Randy Collins's field?
Yeah, so we talked about.
Interesting, yes, that's a.
Yeah. I don't wanna open up a can. No, I totally, I know. It's fair.
It boggles my mind, and my mind is easily, easily boggled by how the wheels of justice are not over going, we're going over.
No, you're fine. I got a flight to catch at 3:30, so that's how we're gonna keep looking.
You got time to make it through the security area. But why then was it not, or, well, brief, brief as you can do. Show us up.
We, we talked about the possibility of turning 590th, and we're talking about south of Highway 30, uh, upgrading it from a level, uh, level B to a level, and, um, um, deter- that was going on at the same time that Highway 30 was hap- D and D was having their conversation about Highway 30, and we determined at that point that it was kind of an either or. We were gonna either, so we turned 600 into a farm-to-market north of Highway 30. And if they were gonna start closing down access, we were gonna fight to keep 590th open as basically an ag route, turn that into the farm-to-market and put gravel in all the way, all the way south there. When it didn't happen, when all that went away, we decided to put all our funding into 600, getting that paved, I wanna say it's about a billion two to pave that, I may be missing all that. About a billion two that we're putting in to pave that, and decided we weren't gonna mess with 590th until and unless we know what's happening with Highway 30 down the road.
Okay. Point in fact, that 42 years ago, the market changed from Shipley to where the co-op is today. We've been 42 years or more, wait, maybe 44, waiting for the farm-to-market status of 600 to be.
Right, we just did that.
We just did that.
We did that two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah, and amazingly enough, we had to pull a mile from, from further out, uh, east in the county in order to be able to do it. If, we didn't get the ad, we had to replace.
Take the status off of the Shipley Blacktop. You've got two and a half miles there that's the road to nowhere.
Okay. Yeah.
It's just a point.
Absolutely.
And 600 serves the traffic pattern that you have at the co-op, the ethanol plants, better than 590.
And the bridge. Don't forget, we don't have a bridge.
You've got a million dollar bridge you build there at 590.
Right.
So that's a two and a half million dollar project.
Which is the reason that we don't wanna do a whole lot with 590, we're gonna do 600 instead.
And according to the plans that if this ever comes to fruition before I expire and leave this world, there's gonna be a frontage road eventually that's gonna cut all sections, about the south third-ish area.
Yeah, that's gonna be a really interesting conversation with DOT in seven years when it comes out.
But it, that's the plan that they're looking favorably at. Doesn't mean it's gonna happen quick. It's just they're looking at it, so.
Yep, absolute truth.
And another point in fact, who owns Airport Road out here? County or city of?
It's a half and half.
It's a half and half?
Right.
That is the, the narrowest.
Yep, yep, yep.
Tractor combined path in Story County.
Yeah, which hopefully paving 600 is gonna help take care of that.
It still won't make it any easier getting to and from our service site. Van Wall, Nevada. Those of us who have to use it.
Yep.
Still will be driving up on the grass, which the city does not like if you're do- you do an east side. So.
Yeah, it, that would be a curve and gutter, doesn't make any sense to me, but it is.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Anyway, I spoke.
Thank you. All right, you, thank you. Anybody else? Last chance? Okay. Uh, in writing, and Arden, put yours, we'll go ahead and get this done, but go ahead and just shoot me an email or something. Make sure you get it in writing so that we have it as part of the record, whatever your requests are. Anybody else who would like to, uh, say anything to board on the, uh, TIF, the urban renewal plan? Public forum number two, opportunities for members of the public to address items that are not on today's agenda. Anybody wishing to do so? Seeing no one. Liaison assignments, Wayne?
Pass.
Uh, Marty?
Pass.
All right, I'll pass. Analysis for supervisors, Wayne?
Uh, yes, I'd be back. I could go into a lot more detail, but looking at the time, I won't. I did pass on Janelle Schilroth and to share with, uh, Carla, uh, two of the sessions that I attended in Naco, uh, really was on stepping up initiative, uh, dealing with, uh, mental health, uh, and the jails and what is happening nationwide. It was probably the largest, uh, most attended work session, uh, of all the workshops. Uh, in both cases, they really had to bring in more chairs to accommodate everyone, uh, and there was some interesting things that is happening nationwide. Hopefully that, uh, in the near future, that, uh, Story County, uh, working with law enforcement and sheriff, uh, will be able to, uh, still talk about, uh, addressing, uh, the challenges that we're having, uh, dealing with those with mental illness, uh, that, uh, we'll be, uh, using our jail system rather than being diverted into some other types of, uh, uh, programs and services. So that was, uh, an interesting thing. And then, of course, the highlight for me was being able to picture was Kareem.
I saw that, absolutely.
And to get them signed autograph.
He signed two coats.
Yeah, right, right. So that was a, a highlight. And then, uh, technically USS Iowa, uh, 38 of us that represent the state of Iowa, they, they made a special time, uh, for us to, to go through that. Uh, and the last thing I'll just mention, uh, the power of the larger counties was more evident in the change in the bylaws. We spent considerable time voting on some proposed changes on bylaws and what we found out, that California, Florida, Illinois, and Michigan, uh, uh, their power, uh, came to the forefront because they didn't wanna see some of the changes in terms of how the board of directors, particularly people who are past presidents, uh, could be affected once they leave office and so forth, simply because of, uh, its impact in two counties, state LA County and then our current president, uh, from Denver right now. Uh, but at the end of the day, uh, there was civility and acceptance when the final vote came down, but there was a roll call vote and you could just see the difference between the smaller communities versus the larger counties, uh, when, uh, that was decided. So all in all, it was a, a wonderful conference, a lot of, uh, takeaways. Uh, I think, uh, it's also encouraging to recognize that Iowa, we're at the forefront of many of the innovative things that are happening nationwide. Uh, and, uh, a lot of people, uh, Bill Peterson from the State Association of Counties is certainly one of the most respected executives, uh, in the entire nation, and we heard that